I'd like to call the December 2nd Board Meeting to order. This is the time and the place for the December 2nd meeting of Marshalltown School Board. Welcome to all of you who are with us, and welcome to those who will be watching us on delayed broadcast as well. Allow me to introduce the people at the table with me. From the right, we have Karina Hernandez, Shawn Heitman. From the left, we have Jan McGinnis and Sarah Falters. At the center table, to my right, is Paulette Hubold. She's the Board Secretary. And to my left is Dr. Theron Schutie, the Birthday Boy. So, please join me in singing "Happy Birthday."
(Singing) Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday to you. Happy birthday, dear Theron. Happy birthday to you.
Amy Ossie would be proud.
He just likes to see me turn around. I'm just cutting it off right now.
Okay. We have at the speakers' table a pink sheet for you to sign up if you would wish to address the Board during public comment. Anybody there yet? Okey-dokey. Then I'll forego the rest. Please read with me the mission statement of the Marshalltown Community School District.
We develop learners who have the knowledge, skills, and positive mindset to successfully pursue a meaningful future through personalized learning experiences.
Can stand as your equal and join me in this.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Are there any additions or corrections to the agenda?
We have a small amendment for a surprise announcement during the recognition portion of the meeting. We reserve that to the end of the recognition.
May I have a motion to approve the agenda as amended? Heitman Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same? The motion carries. I'll just give it up. Are you doing any of the recognitions?
Oh, yes. Yes. Sorry. You guys can come on up. So, these are members, some of the members of the class of 1989, and they wanted to talk briefly about a really, really awesome project that went on in a, I don't know if you guys wanted to describe, but I did a story on it already, but they worked to hand out, I think it was 700 books to K-1 students here at the school district.
Yeah.
Can you make sure you use them in my bag? I've been over there so long, I should know this.
Yeah.
So...
You can take that out at welcome hour.
So, this group of, class of 1989 members, along with others in the class of 1989, worked really hard to raise funds and collect 700 books to hand out to our K-1 students here at the district. So, I invited them. We have Amy Pollard, who is a teacher at Hoagland Elementary, and then I'm...
I don't show all of the introductions.
Yes.
We had our class reunion this summer in September, and we wanted to do something to give things back to the community. And so, as we met as a committee for planning purposes, we brainstormed some ideas of things that we wanted to do. And I shared some things that we had done at Hoagland last year for giving books to kids. And at Hoagland, we raised right around $5,000 to give books to every student in our building every month. And when I shared some stories with these guys about the kids and their reactions to getting books, they were like, "Oh, we're doing that." The kids are like, "It's my book. I get to keep it? This is the first book I've ever had that's my book." And we raised close to $2,000 for books for kids. And so, the plan is to give kids books in kindergarten and first grade, a book. We're going to try to go about every month, but we're not going to be able to do every single month. So, we'll be right around in that. Maybe every other month, close to every month, we'll give every kid in kindergarten and first grade in the district a book of their own. I'll buy the dollar books from Skolastic and then use bonus points to get books for the kids. With me is Julie Patterson, Allison Hicks, David Hicks, and then Jeff Hubbard. And I'll let Jeff talk about the other project that we did for the community, too.
I'm the Park Director. Just started in January, and they asked me about some things that were going on. And someone said, "We'd like to get a park bench." And like, I got a bigger project than the park bench, the Colosseum, which was a big fit. So, we did raise $1,600 to go towards the Colosseum, too. So, not quite as good as Theron's class, but we're pretty happy with it.
I did throw out a challenge to Theron's class to try to raise more money than the class of 89 did, to get books. So, Theron and I have a meeting coming up on December 9th to try to get some more money for books to get. So, we're going to get some stuff in the process to make this continue every single year. And I was hoping that Mike Miller would be here, because I was going to throw the challenge to his class, too.
We can relay the message.
Yes. Now, his class has a challenge. Shawn, if you were to give Megan a challenge, you could throw out a challenge to her.
I don't know.
Yeah.
So, Amy, I've got certificates of appreciation for you and the committee members here. As you stated eloquently after you berated my class email, as you said here, it's hard to envision kids not having books of some kind, but I think due to the challenges some of our families face and the fact that many of our kids are mobile and the books probably don't transfer with them from one place to another, it's an unbelievable experience to see kids handed books. We then have to question you two or three times, "Is this really for me to keep? Is this really mine?" And that's really a special gesture of your class for our most impressionable students at the K-1 level. And hopefully, in some way, shape, or form, we can figure out a way collectively to do that for all kids, you know, in many grades in the years to come. So, thank you very much for your gesture both for the school district and the Colosseum effort as well. The second recognition is for Bee and Janelle. So, if I can hold Janelle, come back here one more time behind the board table. So, every year at the Iowa Association of School Board Convention in November, Board Members across the state are recognized for their dedication to their own self-development and learning. And Bee and Janelle were each recognized with Better Boardsmanship Award this year. And we're off to a great start for the coming year, because we had all of our new Board Members, our three new Board Members, and then Shawn and Karina attended the School Board Convention as well, which is usually 20 points towards 125 that you have to accumulate, 85 of which have to come through formal learnings such as workshops or webinars and that sort of thing. So, I want to thank and congratulate the two of you for your continued efforts. You've received this every year that I've been here, so that's fantastic. I've asked Finance Director Hubold to please share the special news that we received today.
Yeah, do you want to do it? As well as Janelle and myself, Dr. Schutie also received an Award of Honor from the Iowa Association of School Boards for that same minimum of 125 credits. So, he has received the individual Award of Achievement certificate, as well as both Janelle and myself.[630.12][630.12](Applause) How are you?
Good news, good news.
Even better news.
Yes. Today was a really good day. We're excited to share with everyone that we received notification from the Internal Revenue Service today and some refund checks. We did receive back 100% of the penalties that we were unfortunately assessed about a year and a half ago. So, that was really good news, and we gave Dr. Schutie, yeah, we gave Dr. Schutie $600,000 as an early birthday present.[677.12][677.12](Laughter)
$642,149.51 to be exact. We were pleasantly surprised to have received the full refund of the fees and penalties that we had paid, as well as the interest on that money over that time.
Right. And much thanks to Chris Swartzberger, our local attorney, and Bruce Baker, who is a tax attorney, out of Duane for helping us through that appeal process. It was well worth it.
Well, and I would commend Paulette and her team as well for the countless hours that were put into this particular situation and any other ramifications that may have resulted from it, and putting forward, along with our attorneys, a really good case for forgiveness. So, everyone, including our attorneys, were pleasantly surprised that it was a full refund, because I think everyone assumed that there would be some sort of partial refund for just simply not knowing based on past cases what it would be. But I think a tribute to everybody pulling together to put a strong case forward for the district to pay huge dividends today.
And the charges have already been deposited.
They have. I drove them straight to the bank myself.[766.12][766.12](Laughter)
Moving on to the consent agenda. Are there any additions or corrections to the minutes of November 18th, Special Board Any additions or corrections to the minutes of the Annual Organizational Board Meeting of November 18? Looking at personnel items, are there any items of note?
All defer to the Birthday Boy.
Thanks, Bern. Just wanted to make a comment. We've got resignation on the books for tonight for Josh Wesley, our Director of Technology. It's been a pleasure working with Josh the past three and a half years, I can say, and all of my years having had the opportunity to work with a variety of technology directors that Josh, despite his youth and youthful appearance, has probably done the best job of anyone that I've had the pleasure of working with in terms of helping to create a vision for the district and how best to leverage technology and resources to advance achievement and knowledge and skills of students, and as well as helping to move our employees forward and using technology to be more efficient and effective in what we do every day. So, it's definitely a bittersweet situation. Josh will be assuming a similar role with the Lockey Community School District with the new year, and we're hopeful to find someone that can fill his shoes in the next month. But on behalf of the administrative team, and I think the Board as well, we thank you for your service to the district.
Moving on to interagency agreements and contracts. We have an agreement for Microsoft software products. We have consent to do updates at the mobile cellular telecommunications facility, which is, where's 16 out?
It's at a school, so it'll be the cell tower.
Server. Yeah, okay. We have six special needs children out and one gen ed out, and under open enrollment. We have two out for next year. Are there any items of note in bills? Looking at grants and gifts, we have received a community grant on behalf of the Alliant Energy Foundation for the First Tech Challenge League competition in the amount of $1,500. Any questions on that before we move on? Looking at the project research, we have research being done in the district on diet strategies in rural middle school children who are at risk for high blood pressure. Any questions on the research project? May I have a motion to approve the consent agenda as presented?
Sooner.
Sooner.
Falters Heitman, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same? The motion carries. I'll just give it up. Nobody on the sheet? Before you start your presentation, will you introduce yourself? Hello, microphones are live, so you can each have one.
I'm Dory Pinkerton, and I'm a high school math teacher at Marshalltown High School. I also help co-fund the Marshalltown Bot Cats, and that was the $1,000, $500 that we received from Alliant Energy that you just approved. Jacob is with me, he's one of our students, and he gets to do the presentation.
All right. I'm Jacob Swartz. I'm the Chief Financial Officer for the Marshalltown Bot Cats. So, the Marshalltown Bot Cats, we are a bunch of students that go to Marshall High School that are interested in robotics and really just want to learn more about that and be involved. We are mentors who have worked with our team and want to help us learn and do better in that field. And we are coaches, like Mrs. Pinkerton, who help organize the team and like, set all our stuff up. Yeah. So, yeah. So, what we do as a team is we compete in a competition called Tech Challenge, which is run by FIRST, the organization. FIRST is an acronym that stands for Inspiration and Recognition of Science and Technology. Basically, this organization wants people to, wants to inspire young people to be more interested in technology so that they can be better at that when or if they decide to go pursue that in their future. So, and basically, First Tech Challenge is a robotics competition where teams come together to make a robot, which will compete in a challenge. And the challenge is different every year. Each team participates in six qualifying competitions, and then there is a super qualifier, and then state championship, and so on up till world championship. So, how our team does it is we have our team divided into four sections. We have our hardware team and our software team, which work on the robot and improving that to make it better. We have our finance team, which manages our money and organizes our fundraisers. And we have our outreach team, which organizes, connecting with our community and where to fundraise at, and sponsors and all that. So, part of First Tech Challenge is, there's obviously the robot competition, but also part of every FIRST project is inspiring younger people to be part of the, to be part of FIRST and technology and connecting with their community. So, what our team does for the inspiration part of that is we hosted over last summer a Kids Academy at MCC for young students in elementary school that were interested in robotics. Later, or yeah, later this month, we will be hosting a First Lego League meet at the high school. And Lego League is another FIRST competition for elementary students. It's less competitive than First Tech Challenge, and it's Legos, so it's fun for the younger people.
That's fifth, eighth grade, isn't it?
Yes, yes. And earlier last month, we went to a STEAM night at Hoagland, which, where we took our robot and what we had and showed it to everyone else that was there, so that they could see what we had done so far and just how our progress is going and what we did. And for connecting with our community, what we've done is we toured Marshalltown Company to see how they use their robotics to help them with their making tools. We had a float in the homecoming parade at the high school to show everyone there what, basically, who we were and what we were doing. We are currently having people, members from our team, go to the public library to help with, give tech help to people who go in. Older seniors will go in needing help with phones or computers, and we have our members going in to help them with that. We will be hosting seniors in college at MCC sometime in the future for essentially the same thing as the tech help sessions at the library. Seniors that, we'll be educating them about how to better use technology like phones and computers. And we have, we send out monthly newsletters to our sponsors to update them on dates that we have competitions and the progress we've made since the last time we got together. So, our finances, we, our team has an operating budget, so we, whenever we spend something, we look at the money we have to make sure that it lines up with what we had planned. On the left is what we originally have. This is, that's all the money that we, that we had to spend at the start of the year. We looked at and said, "We have to spend money on these things." And so, we set that all out and set aside the money for that. And then on the right is all of the money since, for this season, that we have fundraised through sponsorships and T-shirts and all that. So, since the start of the season, we have raised about over $5,500, which we're very proud of. That's a lot better than we raised last year. And yeah, we're really proud of that. And then with this Alliant grant, which is the entire reason I'm here, it'll help our team do much more than we could before with, yeah, more, just, it'll give us more opportunities. Yeah. Any, any, yeah, any questions from, yes?
Do you know what your question will be before you go to competition, or do you have, that you have to solve and create a robot?
Oh, the challenge for each season? Yeah. Every season before, at the start of each season, FIRST has a livestream where they show off what the challenge is and what your robot's going to have to do, so that you have time to build your robot and get it working before the qualifying competition starts.
Is there a theme each year similar to FIRST?
Yes, yes. Each year, there's a different theme. This year, we have, it's sponsored by Star Wars called Skystone, where the challenge is there are these blocks that are being stacked, and you score more points based on how high your robot can stack these blocks on a foundation that can move around. Last year, the challenge was Rover Ruckus, where there was a lander and two craters with minerals that you had to load inside the lander and score points depending on that. So, it's different every year. And it's always really interesting to see what FIRST comes up with.
How many students are on your team?
We have... There's 13 total right now. We can have a maximum of 15. We didn't, this year, spread the word and ask for more students, because we weren't prepared to have, we didn't have the supplies to get the kids' hands on all of the materials. So, we're excited now with all the grants and sustainability as a part of FIRST. They want to see that you can sustain your own program, that the students are excited about going out into the community and reaching out and learning about how to build a program, how to build a business. So, it's very much a part of the college and career readiness program that we are very much a part of in the Marshalltown School District.
Other questions? Thank you very much.
I just have one last clarification. FLL starts at second grade.
Oh, second grade.
Yeah, it goes down with the looks. Thank you all very much for having us.
Senator Edler and Representative Smith, we have a microphone for each of you. So that everybody can hear you and be recorded for our broadcast.
Thank you once again for coming before the Board to talk about your vision and what you anticipate for the upcoming legislative session. And we've shared with your district priorities through email as well as IASB, so we'll talk a little bit about that. But I want to thank you for not only taking the time, but come, which you always do, literally invite, but also your dedication to serving our MEA forums as well, because consistently, the two of you are there fielding questions and providing updates regularly on that. And on a personal level, each one of you have been very proactive and deemed necessary to ask my opinion or district's stance on particular issues or how issues that are being debated are considered, whether impact, good or bad, the district and the legislature's considering things, and there's a lot to be said for that. Regardless of, from time to time, whether we agree to, agree or disagree, you always are asking the necessary questions to get the information, the best information you need in order to take action on educational issues. I greatly appreciate that.
So, we'll hope the Board to both of you to give us an idea of what you see ahead in the legislative session and those things that you're deeply interested in driving at the session. And then I'm sure we'll have some questions.
Do you want to go ahead?
Sure.
Well, first off, I'd like to recap just a couple of the large items that we were able to come through on last year. One... One, being SAVE. I would like to ask, do you have any plans? Or what are you thinking on possible infrastructure expenditures in the near term that that SAVE is gonna benefit you with?
Yeah, well, we've got a number of items that have been identified as needs for the future, most of which are apparently large scale. So it was going to require an extension of SAVE, which we're greatly appreciative. We're currently in the midst of implementing some additional enhancements to our safety and security beyond just having secured entrances. We're using SAVE dollars from the previous allocation for that. And we've actually got on the agenda tonight some timelines that we're meeting, some of which were as, because of the new legislation regarding athletic facility enhancements or improvements or construction that were invoked. So there's really both the construction timelines that we have to meet as well as the new timelines as a result of that legislation. We're currently looking at doing a reconstruction of our existing tennis courts at Marshawn High School and enhancing that facility since it has become over time the racket facility for the community since West End Courts have been repurposed under Futsal and other courts over the years have gone away that were community courts that the city managed. So that's right now on the immediate horizon, horizon which without SAVE, there would be no way we would be able to move forward on that.
Thank you for that update. One of the other things that I see moving forward again, this has been near and dear to me also, is the transportation cost per pupil equity. There was agreement of seven point five million dollars from last year at the House going back to that transportation equity. And once again, we will try for a ten dollar per pupil on the cost per pupil equity, which either you will get direct dollars to the school or property tax relief to the taxpayer. Also looking at some other rural loan forgiveness types of legislation for educators. Taking a look again at Praxis, making sure there aren't any loopholes in some of the legislation that's been done on that to allow some exemptions for border state teachers coming in. Also, another large item, I guess, that has been a little near and dear to Representative and I, and this is the children's mental health. We will be taking a very hard look in education committee on some violent student alternatives for teachers and schools. This has been something that's come up multiple times in meetings I've had with teachers and administrators. And we're gonna take a very hard look at how we're doing things, really understand what the least restrictive environment means to educators and administrators because I think that definition has maybe gotten a little distorted through perception versus reality. And we're gonna go through and make sure there's a very clear understanding of what that is and how we come up with solutions around that definition. Also, as I've always promised in the past, and since I've been in office, we have delivered inside of the thirty days for setting SSA. We may not always agree on what that number is, obviously, but you know what it is. It's something we can promise. We've always delivered. We've never pulled back on you. So, once again, we have a bill sitting. The number is blank yet. We need to wait for the December revenue estimating conference, obviously. I think we came out of one point four in October for growth. We hope we see a better one in December.
We hope you get your home.
Another thing, I know I did hear on the, excuse my voice. I've spent about ten days without a voice, so I was lucky I got it back two days ago so I could come and speak a little bit. I know I've, I've heard Dr. Shudey talk about the start date situation of August twenty-third. And, you know, just a brief history of that. The old law was after Labor Day, if I'm correct. So actually, when the legislature acted, we gave it a week sooner date because the governor's office was not gonna allow waivers. So we actually brought it in closer to what you wanted. The issue is you need lobbying the governor's office on those waivers. So the legislature tried to make steps to make that compromise. So I know that's not a huge issue, but it's obviously a real issue when you have two to two and a half weeks of snow days pop up. So I think that's kind of where I'm at currently. When I started in the Senate, I was education chair, or vice chair, excuse me, Sun-Sun. I have actually left the education vice chair, and I'm now the chair of local government. I still continue to sit on chair of local government, education, veterans affairs, agriculture, ways and means, human resources, international relations, and also sit on the state children's mental health board, or behavioral health board, as we've named it after the legislation. So, would feel any questions or let Representative talk. We can get questions later, whichever you prefer.
Well, thanks. We may have had the same thing because I haven't had much of a voice over the last several days either. And a couple of weeks ago, I was at church and someone said prayers for the people that have the bug that's going around. At that time, it was kind of abstract. A week later, it wasn't nearly as abstract why that was important here. Well, let me start with what I remember from the emails on what the board's desires for the legislative session were and also what came from the Iowa School Board Association. I am a strong advocate that we continue to set state supplemental aid very early in the session. I posed changes to the legislation, the requirement that it be within the first thirty days, and feel whether, whatever that number is, it's important for you folks to have that. And if I remember correctly, there have been years that this board has raised property taxes. Then when they got the number, have reduced property taxes. And of course, the overall issue is that whenever state supplemental aid is low, that means that you have to turn to the property taxpayers more. And I believe that income tax is a more progressive tax system than the property tax system is. My concern with the amount is that over the last ten years, it has been lower than the rate of inflation for nine out of those ten years. And this affects what we, how we view education here in our state. So it's important to me that we set that number early, and it's important that that number be what it is needed in order to provide the quality education that we need for Iowa students as they compete in a global economy. More important to me, or more that follow the question I think was asked, the things that we'll be working on during the legislative session. And as I looked at the school board association's list of priorities, the mental health priorities, many of which look like they came out of legislation that was the primary sponsor of during the last legislative session. In nineteen ninety-one, if Marshalltown School District wasn't the first, we were one of the first school districts in the state to provide school, mental health services in the school. And I was that first provider who provided those services in the school. And I think that that's a very critical component. Now, recently, I spoke to the Newton School Board, and someone raised the question about that big mandate that the service is being provided. But I clearly support the, and have that in my legislation, that if mental health services are paid for by an insurance program, then they should be provided in the schools. This works much to the advantage. We have children that are missing less, fewer hours of their school day by parents having to come and get them and take them into the mental health center for services when they're provided, and they can go down the hall and receive those services instead. Second of all, families are usually very in tune to receiving services in the schools and feel safe in those services being provided there. And third, if proper authorizations to release professional information are provided, then there can be coordination of services with educators, which is very critical, particularly with disorders like attention deficit hyperactivity disorder. So I'll be working on that again this year. I think that there are a number of things that we can do in that legislation to improve the mental health delivery of our children. If there is a medical condition out there that early detection doesn't help with, I'd like to know what it is. And this field has changed dramatically in the years that I've been a mental health professional. We used to tell parents that their children would have attention deficit symptoms by the time they were eighteen. We don't tell them that anymore. We used to say that they're not indicators of schizophrenia before someone's in their late teens. We don't say that anymore. So we're really at a stage where the level of research and the knowledge, the exposing of the riddles of the brain are here, delivery of services here. So I very much commend the ideas of loan forgiveness and grants to help with people going into these professions and think that this is important for us to help with the cost of education so that we get more people in the field. So with that, I'll shut up and take your questions.
Questions from the board?
I'll go ahead and speak a little bit to Senator Edler. You mentioned the start date, and I think any time in the recent past that I've spoken about that, it's been in relationship to pushing the end of the year to a later start. I would say, you know, most, well, first of all, when the law was September first, the state allowed the waiver for all that I had for the districts, at least for the thirty-five years I've been in education, probably beyond that. So it didn't feel like a mandate because it was left up to local control to decide when that start date would be. Some started extraordinarily early in August in order to better coincide with the community college and regents calendars. We're on different conditions than we are in terms of number of days and so forth. But I would say that's been one of the bigger challenges that on the one hand, the legislature has helped support and promote, providing all students with the opportunity for dual credit, which comes through a collaboration with community colleges and regents. But we have to align two different calendars in order to make that happen unless you have the luxury of having your own staff members in the public school that can deliver those courses. But if kids are taking courses out at the local community college or a university, they have to navigate two different calendars, generally speaking, because, well, I think nearly all the regents as well as community colleges tend to end their first semester by winter break, which is what kind of drove the earlier start dates of public schools. What I would say would be a reasonable adjustment to the current calendar language would be requiring the start no sooner of August twenty-third or Monday following the state fair ended. Because the state fair was a big reason, both for spectators to attend, parents and children, families, as well as youth workers to be available. And I know that it's probably, as far as tourism goes, much beyond the state fair with other entities that benefit from access to cheaper labor with youth. But that would be, I think, a more reasonable and tolerable way to approach the August twenty-third date if the state fair is a big driving factor there. The other thing that I've mentioned before to relative to state funding is that, you know, essentially the amount of annual increases that districts have been given for many, many, many years was double or more what it currently is and has been over the course of the last ten years. And I think either by coincidence or just bad circumstances with the state budget as part of that, it kind of coincided with the incorporation of teacher leadership and compensation. So for the first year of that implementation, which I believe has been a highly needed and successful program to provide additional support to all of our teachers, you know, we had a four percent increase that particular year. And then for each year following that, for whatever reasons, it's been two percent or less. And as Representative Smith pointed out, which, you know, to us, superintendents who were asked by the governor at the time to support it, we supported it as long as it wasn't kind of come at the expense of reduced, at the time allowable growth or state supplementary. But it does feel like kind of a supplanting of funds versus a supplemental funding in order to provide higher quality education and support. And the bottom line for a majority of Iowa's districts were also losing enrollment at the time. Fortunately, at least in the recent past, we have not been outside of the tornado situation. You know, it leads to reduction of staff because that two percent or less is what is then used to determine any increases that might be given. And if there isn't room for those increases, then it pretty much forces reduction in force or staff, whether it be licensed or certified staff and that sort of thing. Obviously, the funding is our number one priority, having adequate funding to provide a high-quality education first and foremost for all students. And then, as you had pointed out, we were really appreciative of the per pupil equity because that did positively impact us, whereas our transportation needs and costs are not at a level to where the transportation equity necessarily impacts us positively at this point. But it does impact a lot of our neighboring districts and certainly many of the world districts who are now having to transport kids along ways. As far as mental health services, Matt Kreitzner, our director of special programs, is actually gonna present on some of our efforts in this regard because we've partnered with our local AA to do some pretty revolutionary work in the area of social emotional learning and trauma-based care. So if you're able to stick around with us at his presentation, I encourage you to do that. But, you know, it's a hard thing to wrap your head around. It's a big, big issue. And as Mark mentioned, Marshtown for many, many years has taken a proactive approach to figuring out ways to work with the local community and providers. And we continue to leverage at-risk dollars to the fullest of our ability. Part of our dilemma is that we can't access all the, or we have chosen not to access over the years, all the at-risk capacity we have because it's a direct impact on local property taxes. And so we've tried to bite off a little bit of chunks each year in the hopes that we can, you know, sustain or maintain a fairly low property tax pass. But the reality is, you know, probably if we ask for it all, it still isn't going to, and increased property taxes to back up the cash position that we need in order to fund it, it's probably still not gonna come close to addressing all of the need that's out there. And as you are aware, this isn't just a Marshtown issue or a statewide issue. It's a national issue. I hear about it everywhere I go, from superintendents all across the country in terms of... And I personally feel a large part of it has to do with the economy and poverty rate. I mean, I think as the poverty rate for Iowa and for the nation continues to increase, I think you see corresponding ramifications with children growing up in poverty in many cases, and then if they have other hurdles or barriers that they're to overcome. So one of the challenges that our kids have is English as a second language. And I know that there was an effort last year that didn't quite make it to the table at the end to increase the percentage of supplemental aid being attributed to English as a second language learners. And I would argue that five years isn't enough of that funding when the research shows that it takes at least seven years for a non-proficient student to become proficient in another language. So any efforts to help our district and other districts like ours that have a very high percentage of second language students would be well appreciated, similar to the transportation equity or just the general per pupil equity. transportation equity or just the general per pupil equity as well.
Are you pausing?
I'm ready. For now.
Before we get off of the mental health thing, I would like to add my thanks that both of you are considering that legislation during this legislative session. However, let me put on my principal hat for just a moment and say that looking at mental health issues when we're only talking about the child or the family who have those issues is not the whole picture. That child in the classroom impacts every other child in that classroom. I have witnessed the number of behavior students who have impacted the learning environment to student achievement becoming less in that classroom because of that. So when you're talking about mental health, we're talking about the other 20 to 25 students in the classroom, we're talking about involving all of our administration, our teachers. There is a high impact and a return on any kind of mental health implications that you can assist in. It's not just the student and his or her family. I know that Jen has this.
I do, actually, just related. You mentioned least restrictive.
No, neither one.
Okay, you mentioned least restrictive environment, and this has been a big issue. I recently wrote to Senator Nebraska about it. As a special educator, I've seen the term least restrictive environment thrown out as a way to justify not providing services to special education students. In some cases, it's students with severe behavior problems, and we're saying, okay, they can't get these services because then we would have to pull them out of the general education setting for this amount of time or that amount of time. And the result is if the child isn't taught how to control his impulses, he's not taught how to behave in a socially appropriate manner because there's no one providing and preventing the direct instruction he needs, and he is interfering with the learning of everyone else in that classroom. In the case of dyslexia, I am a member of the Dyslexia Association. Students are not being taught to read because therefore told, well, after second grade, we don't teach reading. And I was actually in a meeting some years ago when I said, well, what am I supposed to do with my eighth graders that cannot decode? And I was told, well, we don't do this in a public school, it would cost too much, you need to send it to silent learning centers. Well, Marshalltown doesn't have a silent learning centers. That means asking a parent to take a half day off work to drive their child twice a week to Des Moines. And says, is that what you want me to suggest? And he said, no, because then we would have to pay for it. So my comeback was, I am not allowed to provide a service I know how to provide, and I'm not allowed to tell the parent where they can go to get this service. So when you look at least restrictive environment, please also look at most appropriate instruction. It has to go both ways.
If you don't mind, this, part of the perception issue with least restricted environment, when you actually look at the matrix determining the LRE, a lot of those pieces, I think, have been overlooked as far as where the maximum benefit for the child is, is not by having them mainstreamed in a public school in all cases, it's by getting them into the proper facility who can treat one, their mental illness and/or behavioral issues while not hurting others or themselves. And learning, that's the final objective, is getting them to learn. We struggle at completing that matrix and understanding the true LRE on a lot of these students because we're looking at one or two components that have become a priority for some reason. I think we need to take a hard look, and we are. We've had a couple meetings on this already internally. We will be bringing legislation forward to help the schools and the administrators with some of these really tough, violent children, more of a conductual issue rather than a mental illness, because there is quite a difference between the two. And that's why I don't want to blur that line when we talk mental illness, mental health. There's a true mental illness issue and there's a conduct issue, and they're two very separate things. They aren't necessarily overlapped, but a lot of times they are. So we're kind of dealing with two separate issues at once. So, thank you, though.
Well, I think in response to what you said, and Mark's been at the legislature long enough to probably know or understand some of those too, I think part of the problem has a place as special education anyway, which oftentimes these students, not always, but oftentimes they're identified for special education. There's been a big effort for the past 15 to 20 years, pressure from the federal government on the state government, and the state on the, through the Iowa Department of Education on the AAs, and then to the school districts to try to reduce the, both the identification as well as the weighting associated with supporting students that have been identified for special needs. And the reason was Iowa per capita had the highest cost per student in the country, and we're not necessarily seeing student achievement rates, especially, we're still very disproportionate in our student achievement rates of special needs students. So there was a lot of pressure exerted to force students into a more or a less restrictive environment from where they may have been in, strictly related to the cost associated with it based on that data for about the past 15 to 20 years. So I think that might be part of what's happening as well. I think it's always taken an amount of time to have a student that receives identification with special education, there are certain processes and procedures that have to be followed in order to make sure that those placements are absolutely correct in terms of receiving special needs services. But there's been a purposeful de-weighting of those students, which has resulted in less services being provided through peer professionals or other supports. And it sounds easy to say that there might be other places. We're fortunate that we have forums right here in our school district partnered with us to serve some of the most severe needs in that regard. Most districts don't have that opportunity, but the costs associated with supporting a student in that regard are probably three, four times what they otherwise would be within the school district as well. And all of that comes back to the taxpayer because anything beyond what the federal and state government give us for special needs students is backfilled with property taxes.
I wanted to respond to those things too, if I may. First of all, going back to what B said, I agree with all of the benefit of what you're talking about. And looking back over the years that I've provided mental health services in schools here in Marshalltown, I think the time that I spent consulting with educators was equally important to the time that I provided individual services. And I think that's an added benefit that we get by having those services in the school. But I also think that we have to go beyond what you're talking about. Part of the proposal I had is that we need a crisis intervention team in the Department of Public Health, particularly for suicide prevention, that if you have a teenager who commits suicide, it's very common that you have copycats afterward with that. I was fortunate during the years that I practiced here in Marshalltown to have a child psychiatrist here in our community. They're rare, first of all, and second of all, to have one in the community made a tremendous difference. So this goes back to the board's association's recommendation. We need all mental health professionals from psychiatry on down in order to provide the appropriate team approach that we need here. I think conduct disorder is a mental health condition, and it's included in the diagnostic manual in that regard and can be treated. We just need more of the professionals to provide those services. So this all comes back to, we could do a lot more if we had the money invested in the education that we need to do this.
And I think too, part of the, it's a little bit different when you're talking behavior disorders and mental disorders, but not a lot, because many of your more moderate conduct disorders can be handled with half hour intervention during the day, where they just meet with someone, this is how my day went, these were the issues. So they also can be handled in a resource, what would have been called one-time resource type setting. The thing with dyslexia is that for a while, Marshalltown in particular was pulling its dyslexic students out and putting them in a special school, which is really not what they needed. About a half hour a day would have done it. You know, they didn't need to be pulled completely out of the general education population. So I do understand where Iowa got in trouble. So yes, you are walking a tightrope here trying to figure out how to offer these services. But I think what's something that's really important, probably the takeaway I got from the school board thing was the last session I went to. This was Andrew versus Douglas. The appropriate education needs to be reasonably calculated to enable a child to make progress. It is not okay to simply say, well, he didn't learn to read by second grade, so he won't be reading as a senior in high school.
Other questions for our visitors? Any closing comments?
I'll just say, I'll stay with the other presentation.
It won't be too long for them.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you and good luck.
I appreciate you having us here. Appreciate the opportunity to work with everyone there, and you've been great to work with. And there's been a lot of times I'll call him on a weekend even to try and see what his thoughts are. You know, I appreciate Representative Smith and the work he's done on mental health and children's behavioral health. I was very honored to be chosen to run the governor's bill, which became the law for children's behavioral health, and we're going to continue to work on it. So thank you.
Thank you.
I do need to go, I've got another meeting tonight, but I would like to get to another of the gentlemen so we can talk.
Yeah.
We'll be on delayed broadcasts as well.
For this meeting, we have two BIOS of two students that are taking dual credit courses. So this one is for Casey Udi, and she will be going to Iowa State, and she will graduate from high school with 64 credits. And you guys can read her quote. The next student is Olivia Britnell, and she will be going to UNI and also graduating high school with 64 credits.
I was talking with Mrs. Wyatt, the high school principal today, and I think she told me that we have close to 10 or 11 students that are on track this year to complete their AA degree before they get their high school diploma.
For sports this week, there is a swimming meet going on right now at the high school. Bowling and boys' basketball have a home game tomorrow, I think girls' basketball also has a home game tomorrow. And then both boys' and girls' basketball have a home game on Friday, and wrestling has a meet on Thursday. So there was a Plin's Citya sale a week ago. They were sold at $13 each with the colors being pink, red, and jingle bells. The money would be going to the improvement of the greenhouse and the stigons. The one who organized the sale gave me a quote about it. You guys want to read it?
Aren't they also selling plants at one of the bazaars this weekend?
I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you. That's a yes.
So last Wednesday, we had the Science of ISU freshmen come over during their meeting. Last year's student representative, Jocelyn Sharknado, was also there. And they talked to us about their current classes and how they were balancing work and university. They also showed us their schedules and some advice that they would give to us a year before the seniors were entered, as well as some good tips on how to stay in Science Bound for the rest of the three other grades. So several teachers and seniors were involved in giving gift to custodians based on their hard work and how they clean up our school. Elizabeth Juarez, she's a senior at MHS. She and another student, Sivoli Rodriguez, were the ones who organized this, this giving to them. If you guys want me to read your quote. Our had a fundraiser just a few weeks ago. They had four seasons fundraising. The money would go towards any equipment for the classes, such as cameras, photography class, or paints for the art class. The order should be delivered to the school, and the students would give them by hand to the ones who ordered them.
To help fund some of the costs for our Orlando, Florida trip, our second fundraiser opened on November 18 and closed today, and some of the items that could be purchased were chocolates, peanuts, and fruit. Ski ball auditions will take place on December 5, and on the same night, the Lennon Hand Concert will take place at 7:00 PM with high school students playing holiday tunes with the students. The band concert is December 8, while the orchestra one is the 12th, serving to provide challenging opportunities for band kids. The first honor band of the year is Drake Honor Band with the following people making it in. For the concert band, Joe Barlow and Jordan May, and for the wind ensemble, Kayden Reeves, Tristan Ober under Rebecca Stone, Colin Jensen, and myself. Along those lines, there are also opportunities for the orchestra with the following making it into the Drake Honor Orchestra, Anthony, and there's a couple more.
What instrument do you play?
NHI recruitment is still taking place with the requirement of a 3.0 GP to make it in. Dave's coffee cake is still, sale started November 24th and will go through the 8th of December. Most of our sales have been taken quiz at Hy-Vee. I was going to talk about robotics, but they did a really good job with the presentation, so I didn't have to follow that. So XLP News, Quiz Bowl practices during E&amp;Rs and Wednesday lunches. They have currently competed as a novice league but are getting ready to compete in open, which is the higher level. They have placed second at the meets they have participated in, and against popular belief, Quiz Bowl is more than just trivia with 75% of their complex questions dealing with history, science, language arts, and music. The ISU Linguistic Challenge took place last Thursday. It was an all-day event that exposed students to different patterns within languages, and it was a really neat experience that I got to be part of. And then math team recently competed at Waverly Shell Rock High School in the Greater Plains Math League. Their, all the members of the team qualified for state with Derek Ketchum placing first among all freshmen in Iowa schools, and Trevor Ketchum placing second. Math team practices during E&amp;R Mondays and helps to develop a deeper understanding.
Question for our student reps. Thank you very much.
So first, we're here to talk about the application for the School Budget Review Committee. Some of you may be aware, others aren't, but the state of Iowa still does have a couple special schools run, or at least primarily supported by the AA system, or area education agencies. River Hills is one of those schools that's located up in Cedar Falls. River Hills is one of those schools that's located up in Cedar Falls. Our request here is to pay our portion of access to the school, which is $1,798.41. We have a student that attends there because they're able to provide a higher-level support and service for students than what we could in our comprehensive school. And every school district that's part of the consortium there then pays part of that administrative cost so that they can continue to keep the doors open. So that's our request for this evening, is approval to SBRC for that.
Requests? Questions for Mr. Cretzinga?
River Hills is located...
Cedar Falls.
Yeah, so just so people know, in relationship to what we were talking about earlier, so in that case, in addition to just the educational cost, there's also the daily transportation costs.
Yeah.
Administration, transportation, and tuition.
So we pay a tuition, it's an actual cost, which is more than what we receive for the per deal, for the students. We have a vehicle expense of mileage going back and forth.
And a person that has to ride with them.
Yep, so we have a driver, and then we also have to have a person in the car because the students who require the service, they have severe intellectual disabilities, as well as severe behavioral needs. So it's not safe for them to ride without some kind of supervision from the car.
I've been to River Hills, and so I know the population they serve. And it's something that would have been handled probably by Pleasant...
Pleasant Hill.
When they were here, but we don't have that facility anymore.
Correct.
And so, yeah, it makes sense to me. There are students for which we really just don't have a facility.
Correct.
May I have a motion to approve the application to the School Budget Review Committee for administrative costs associated with the River Hills Consortium program for the 2021 school year? Hytman McGinnis, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
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 Opposed, the same? Motion carries, five to zero. Moving to your next.
Thank you. So what I'm going to try to do is a revision of what we talked about as one of our presentations at the Iowa Association of School Boards Convention. I had others with me who did the presentation. Fortunately, the folks from the area education agency couldn't join me tonight. So we're going to provide information that I shared and leave off their introduction to it. But they did a very nice introduction, as you were there, of talking about mental health conditions, situations that students are experiencing in schools, and how we're trying to work getting on the preventative side instead of always being on the reaction side, and trying to address them once they, students are showing up in crisis. So really, we need to put our emphasis on prevention of student behaviors and prevention of things that make schools unsafe, instead of always being on the cure side, which is a really reactionary side. When we find that students are in a situation where they are, you know, I continue to use the phrase in crisis, but their behaviors are making it so that they're uncomfortable and unsafe in school, which affects everyone else around them. The time, the energy, the resource it takes to stabilize those students, and then all those around them, really does create a burden on the system. So we've been focusing on the prevention side. If you haven't been following the news, the reason we're spending so much attention on this issue is really, you know, there's a huge increase in the number of students served in special education with behavioral services. When I started this profession, the most common service that students needed was literacy and reading support. And then it went through the academics, and behavior was towards the bottom. Nowadays, it's, depending on the district, most of them is pretty close associated between literacy needs and behavioral support needs. If you're not familiar with the National Institute of Mental Health, or NIMH, one in five youth have, or will have, signs of mental health disorders. Some of the research out there is there is a 10-year gap between when we start seeing some of those onset conditions and when kids actually get diagnostic treatments. And 21% of students reported having a plan to kill themselves over the past 12 months, according to the statewide Iowa Youth Survey. And that's a pretty concerning piece of information. And if you think about just what we expect of all students, social-emotional learning is an expected competency for them. We want them to be, whether we want to talk about obcat-ready, college and career-ready, employability, just general life skills, and having the ability to have a social and personal life that's appropriate. This is an area that we all have to make sure our kids have the skills to operate in. So here's where we join the conversation. About two years ago, our district started a different approach in supporting kids with social-emotional needs. And really, what launched our work were three primary things at the time. We were just finishing doing a community-wide survey, trying to get information from our community about what's going well in Marshalltown, what are things that we like about our schools, and what are things that would love to see us pay more time and attention to improve in. And as we got that information back through thought exchange, one of the big areas that they would love to see us pay more attention in is about school behavior and school safety. About that same time, we had just finished doing a book study called Teaching the Harmony in Mind by Eric Jensen. And if you haven't read the book, I highly recommend it, it's a quick read. But essentially, the book talks about, there are all these factors that our kids are facing nowadays. And as much as they try not to, they bring those with them every day in school. So if we want them to be ready to pay attention in school and meet our expectations in school, we have to understand what they're coming to school with and what they're dealing with. And also, we were dissatisfied with our social-emotional support outcomes. We weren't doing bad, but as we continued to look at our information about office referrals, and out-of-school suspensions, and the number of students who were dropping out, we absolutely thought we could do better. And so using these three events going on created a platform for us to start looking differently about social-emotional supports. And when we started studying our information, we found out that Marshalltown, like some other districts, we are extremely data-rich. You know, we have all these sources of information to talk to us about our kids and their situations. If you've never looked at the Iowa Youth Survey, it's a very powerful piece of information because it gives us the students' perspective on their situations, whether it's their interactions at school, their home life, different issues around safety, mental health. Districts have information like us about office referrals, suspension, and expulsions. A newer item is called the Conditions of Learning Survey, where we collect information about what are those learning environments and how well are kids able to stay engaged in those environments, based on what's going on. We collect information about the use of restraint, seclusion. And then, a unique thing, which was kind of mentioned earlier, is it's been six years now, we started a partnership with an organization called Four Oaks. And Four Oaks is a private mental health agency that we work to create some specialty classrooms, which we call therapeutic classrooms here. So essentially, we're trying to provide service to kids who have special education needs, but the primary factor creating those behaviors are mental health conditions that create their environment to be unsafe. But we'll talk a little bit more about Four Oaks down the road. So we had to update our understanding of current research. We had all this information about what was going on in Marshalltown, what was going on with our students, and so we thought we had a good profile of them. But we needed to figure out, what does the current information talk to us about these areas? And so we studied through a committee, and the committee was represented by folks of every grade level, of every type of position, from... We had some folks from the community, we had folks that were administrators, teachers, social workers, counselors. And so we looked at what we could learn about behavioral sciences. And we studied neuroscience research. And we studied mental health conditions and treatment information. And went back and updated our understanding about child development and the effects of trauma. Now, interestingly enough, our local AIA was doing the same work at the same time, and we have regular meetings with them as an administrative team. And so we came together and said, well, here's what we've been working on, and they said the same thing. And as we started talking about how our work was going and things we hoped to accomplish through it, it just made perfect sense to us to create a partnership and work together instead of working apart for this. And I think this is important, this is one of my favorite quotes. You know, "If you had an hour, you'd spend 55 minutes thinking about the problem and five minutes solving it." I think it's one of the powers that we're able to do in this process because our group spent a lot of time studying both our students and what research currently says, before we started to create any action steps. And through all of our studies and conversations with the AIA, what we learned through the research is that how a child's mind develops, learns, and response to situations is based on science, not science fiction. So many people read all kinds of stuff, whether it's, you know, you want to read Facebook, you want to Google things, you know, stop in the supermarket, I'm sure there's an article about, you know, the neurosciences. But when you look at the research, it's incredible what science allows nowadays. Functional MRIs and brain scans can really give us as much information about how a brain develops and responds to situations as we know about how reading develops in a child's mind. Our district's approach to supporting students' behavior was very traditional, and it wasn't grounded in current research. And here's what I mean by that. If you're an educator anywhere in the state of Iowa, or pretty much anywhere in the country, when you go through the teacher prep program, they'll teach you what's called operant conditioning. You heard called different types of things, like applied behavior analysis, or different kinds of structured teaching. But essentially, it's a highly researched approach for certain kinds of behaviors. Now, the problem is that when you apply it correctly, under the right conditions, it works really well. And it works so well that places like us, we try to apply it to everything, every situation. And ABA, or operant conditioning, was not designed to address mental health conditions, chronic stress and trauma. It was about teaching patterns of learned behavior when those other factors weren't at play. We also took a look at, we were focusing on the wrong aspects of behavior. For instance, a teacher would call and say, "I'm really tired of Johnny in the classroom, he's always hitting, kicking, throwing things." And so we would try to stop the hitting, kicking, and throwing. But what we had to do is step back and say, why are they doing that? There's a purpose or a reason they're doing that, there's something causing that, and that's where we need to spend our time and energy. Because if we can solve that situation, we won't see the behaviors we don't like. And then, interestingly enough, we did a data tracking of students who had ongoing situations and concerns. And we found that using things like detention, in-and-out-of-school suspension, taking away preferred activities, calling the parents to inform them that their child's misbehaving, those had no long-lasting effects to students. You know, they would change the behavior for a day, maybe a few days, but essentially, the same students would come back to the same situations, and they would spend most of their time, like, in the principal's office. So we had to think about doing something in addition to those. So we have to hold kids accountable, but we also have to do other things in addition to those to help them develop the skills we expect them to. We also learned there's a lot of reasons kids behave or misbehave at school. And as I think about this image up here, you know, what we see at school is just a small piece of everything else going on. So students come to school, and they're doing the best they can every day. But we don't know everything they have going on underneath. Whether it's mental health conditions, whether it's they're being put in inappropriate situations at home, where I'm 10 years old, but it's my responsibility to get my three younger siblings out the door, and fed, and ready for school every day. The stresses of families are inadvertently putting on them for financial or personal reasons. Our kids are coming to school with a lot going on, and they hold it together the best they can. There will become a point where that's too much for them, and that's when we see the behavior we don't like. That's when we see those externalizing behaviors. Some of these things, we have an influence on, other things we don't. But what we can influence is how we work with them day in and day out here in our schools. But we also learned then, we needed to enhance our social-emotional level of support for our kids. So how we went about this was to develop a series of committees. Because a district this large, to make this kind of change, you have to get a lot of people involved in a lot of different lives. I was part of all these committees, as well as someone from the AIA leadership team. And then we had different representatives from different schools and agencies along the way. So the first one was our Scaring Committee. And this was a group that set the vision for our work, what we want to accomplish in five years. What does success look like at the end of year one, at the end of year three? And what are some of those goals going to look like, and how are we going to measure them? We also developed a leadership team between the AIA and ourselves, because we're very large entities, lots of people are involved in this work. So how do we have those primary points of contact to make sure that we're working together effectively and efficiently? The Professional Development Design Committee was probably the most challenging committee. So how do you take common information and common content and develop it so that it stays to the expectations you need, but it's also ability to be tailored across 10 different attendance centers? So that people at different levels of learning can still move forward and not feel like they're being held up because they already got prior knowledge. And then the one that I enjoyed the most was the Community Wide Committee. How do we work with the four mental health agencies that we support here in Marshalltown and come to our schools? How do we work with Department of Human Services, the local police department, Child Abuse Prevention Services, and make it so we understand what we're both trying to accomplish? Give them some background in the language, and the skills, and the expectation we have around kids, and try to wrap our services around them as much as possible. We then started to work on training our staff in a more current approach-aligned. So we're continuing to use operant conditioning when it's appropriate. But beyond that, we needed to find something that was more trauma-informed and base in current research. And so those of you who have been on the board for a little while have continued to approve our work with Dr. Avalon in problem-solving. And that gives us an approach on how do we teach kids the neurocognitive skills to keep themselves calm and regulated and deal with the stressors day-to-day. But we couldn't work on just one part, we had to work on our entire system all at the same time. And so here are the steps that we began. First, we had to define what are our social-emotional competencies and philosophy. Now, within the last month, the state of Iowa has published their own. But before that, we were working with a national organization called CASL. We had to make sure everyone understood what positive behavioral intervention support means. When we talk about PBIS, most people think about rewards, giving kids things for behaving. And we had to remind them that it's about teaching common expectations and acknowledging kids when they meet those expectations. And acknowledgement doesn't mean you're physically giving them something, it's about relationship building. Calling them out and saying, "I really like what you do, great job, high five, let's have some of that quick time together so we can build that relationship and also make sure they understand we're seeing them do the right behaviors." We've adopted a new guidance curriculum called Positive Action, which has been aligned to the work and philosophy we were trying to accomplish. We began implementing universal screening through ninth grade for all of our students three times a year. And the reason we do universal screening is to try to be proactive. So which students may we believe need additional support? Who are we starting to have concerns about? It hasn't risen to that level where we're seeing those behaviors of concern, but there's enough indicators or red flags that we can work proactively with them, and hopefully, they'll get to that place. I talked a little bit about the universal professional development that we did, making sure that all buildings are giving the same information, but at their own pace. We also invested in working with Dr. Avalon's organization to get professional coaching. Because any of you who have been in education know that, a training is not enough. You know, you sit through a training, and you hope that you retain a lot of information, but you need ongoing support in doing it and doing it. And then working with our school counselors and our district social workers to ensure that their roles and responsibilities allowed time for them to be on the proactive side, as well as the reactive side. And they do so much of now teaching around the Positive Action curriculum. We're supporting classroom teachers in doing that work as well. So we did a whole lot across one year, after spending almost a year of study. And the question always is, well, how'd that work for you? Well, we thought it worked pretty well. As we look at district-wide data here, after one year of implementation, we saw a decrease of 8.3%, or 344 major office referrals across all of our buildings. So there's another way to think about this, is I talked with our principals. They said, "Matt, usually it's about 10 to 15 minutes to work through a situation when a student's sent to my office. So think about all that time they got back to do things other than discipline." So think about all that time they got back to do things other than discipline." We also keep information about the number of students who have any office referrals, or maybe just one office referral for a major behavior. And when we talk about majors, those are the most serious behaviors. Those are the swearing, the hitting, the kicking, the spitting, the biting, the running away, destruction of property, those kind of items. And we saw that we had a decrease in the number of students who had any office referrals over the course of the year. So we improved by 6.8%. Just like many of you, we're also concerned anytime the student becomes so unsafe that we have to physically manage them or use what's called seclusionary timeout, which is where they're in a specialized room where they can calm down without hurting themselves or anyone else. Over the course of last year, if you look at first semester compared to second, and we were doing a lot of this training, we saw a reduction of 12.2 incidents per month. So we used restraint or seclusion significantly less second semester compared to first, as people were starting to learn about our approach. And we had 15 less students drop out. So, you know, I would love to say it's all because of our social emotional work. There's a lot of things this district does, if you aren't aware, to support kids both in school, out of school, through summer, and year-round. With all those factors and our social emotional work, we were real excited that we had 15 more students stay engaged in school. And then beyond our data, we want to always check with staff and see if they think that we're doing the right work and if this is a good investment in their time. So before we started all this, we'd sent out a survey through Google to them to answer a few simple questions about their thoughts and beliefs around social emotional support. At the end of the year, we sent that same survey out. We added a couple more questions at the end, because the steering committee created five goals for the year. And so we wanted to also get their feedback on if we were meeting those goals from their perspective. Through that survey, between 88 and 96% of staff agreed that this was the right work and that staff behaviors were improving. They also reported back to us, between 84 and 92% of staff agreed the district's approach met our first year, the five goals within our steering committee. So that's really positive information when you ask both the teaching group as well as the parent educators group about, "Is this making a difference in your day-to-day interactions with kids?" Now, before we get to this, the last thing I'll say is, do we still have kids with really intense behaviors? Absolutely. Every school, I believe, has a number of kids that really do occupy their time. But as you look at the large body of students, we have less kids with less intense behaviors. And when they do have those really intense behaviors, we have better resources to align to that, both through our work with our district training, our social workers, our counselors, our AA partners. And then our Four Oaks program, you know, it really has been a savior to our kids. So our Four Oaks programs supports our 18 most challenging kids with disabilities. It's great because we can help them understand the educational aspect, and these are mental health professionals who can really bring a trauma-informed lens to that work. And through that, we don't have to look at sending kids to other facilities or away from our community where, you know, they do the best they can providing their support, but they don't know what we expect in Marshalltown, of our curriculum, of our students, of what, you know, expectations are. Essentially, we have no control what happens once they leave the district. And so this way, we have an opportunity to keep them connected to our work in our district.
What age group is these working with?
Kindergarten through 12th grade.
And where's that house?
Straight below us. So you go two floors down, and it is the north wing of Marshalltown Learning Academy.
Now, you surveyed this staff, and obviously it's not 100%, so was there any concern of the approach or negative effect? Or anything of this staff talked about not working?
Yeah, so, you know, it runs into what I call common systems change items. It could work, but it's not working fast enough, or it doesn't align with my personal beliefs because, whether it was my training, or the way I was raised, or experiences I have, I believe that there's a different way to, you know, get kids to change their behavior. So, and we anticipated that would happen. But we were really impressed that folks, you know, were really agreeing to the approach we were using, because it was working when we did it, it did it correctly.
And I think, as Sarah knows, I knocked a lot of doors and talked to a lot of people. And one of the people I spoke to was a staff person, I just knocked randomly on a door, but a staff person. They were excited about your training for the collaborative problem solving. I didn't get a chance to talk to them later, see how it was working, but I know they were excited about it. I talked to a principal who was excited about how the PBIS model has reduced the number of office referrals. And that was a random thing. And one paraprofessional, oh, and one paraprofessional who felt that she was able to help with de-escalating the state classroom. Things are working well. You are right, I also got information about some of the issues that aren't working well, but as a rule, a lot of what you're doing is making a difference.
You know, we're early into this, I mean, really, if you're going to make a systematic change like this, the research will talk about giving yourself at least three and usually closer to five years to make this a really sustainable change. And right now, we're about year one and a half into actually doing the work. But we're really excited about how things are going, and thanks to the board, we have the ability to bring some of that training locally instead of having to travel out of state for that, so thank you.
Other questions?
I want to thank Matt for representing the district in stellar fashion. Association of School Board Convention, he and Amy Dunne from the AA presented on this in much fuller detail. And it was, of the breakout sessions I went to, it was one of the most highly attended sessions, which just brings to light, number one, the interest in the innovative approach that we've taken towards basically aligning a lot of the work that we're already doing and coupling it with some high-quality professional development for our staff over time and the issues that are out there across the state that all, most if not all, board members as well as administrators are interested in finding complex problems to complex problems.
Well, I will say, as folks across the state have learned about us and doing some of this work, whether it was that presentation or, we've been invited to do several other presentations across the state over the last year. We've had now 21 districts or ADA's come visit us and try to study our model and learn what they can from us.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to ask Paulette to speak towards our recently released Certified Enrollment from the State.
Yes, absolutely. Do you want to open up the second attachment, Emily? Yep. So there's a couple of different terms that we use that's important to understand the difference between, when we talk about certified enrollment, this is what our funding is based off for the upcoming year. This is our actual enrollment plus waitings for things such as supplementary waiting, dual enrollment, things like that. There's also served enrollment, and that number is our residents that we are serving plus our open enrolled tuitioned in students. The next chart demonstrates to you the, I think, nine, maybe good nine years on there, our certified enrollment versus our served enrollment. And more good news for the district is that our certified enrollment for this, that we had in October, was actually up, as is our served enrollment. You might recall that a year ago, our enrollment was down due to tornado issues and such. And we have rebounded or recovered very nicely this year. We will not be off the budget guarantee again that we, as we were this year.
For the benefit of the new board members, our enrollment over the course of the first two years I was here had actually increased about 135 students. And then after the tornado, we had a 90 student drop, which, we tracked all of those students and they literally went all over the country. It wasn't like this one, or to a neighboring community, they literally took off all over the country as well as the northern hemisphere. So we had done a pretty sophisticated enrollment analysis prior to all of that, which would have indicated a stable to slightly growing population. So because of the tornado, it really kind of threw a lot of that out the window with the unknown of, I mean, they tried to factor in and recalibrate our enrollment based on what they believe to be the case, based on similar communities that have experienced natural disasters and such. But it was just very hard to anticipate what kind of rebuild, so to speak, would occur with student population. And a lot of that was predicated on the housing damage and stuff.
Should have prefaced that whole conversation for the new board members with the fact that once a year on October 1st is when we count all of our students and gather all this data, and that determines the funding for the upcoming year. So our October 1st, 2019 certified enrollment was 5,420 students, and our served enrollment was 4,949 students. And we are in the top, I think, we're probably the 15th largest school this year in the state. The next chart will show you the open enrollment in, out, and the net. And we are just looking here at our 1.0 student, or no, this is everybody, ins and outs. So for this year, our out students actually went down to 400 and 546. And our open enrolled in students went down a couple also. So our net out is down 15, 13. But I think it's also, you know, notable that from several years ago, October 2016, our trend is definitely going in a positive, positive direction for the district. This chart will show you the enrollment by level, we're pretty stable. Grades K4 are down a little bit, our lower end grades are down a little bit. Our kids this year in the high school than we did in the prior year, and more in the middle school also. This chart just shows the 1.0, so this excludes all of the waitings for special ed, dual enrollment type additional waitings. This is just the 1.0 students by grade. So you can see that this year, we have our largest class is in sixth grade and some smaller classes at the, at the elementary level. And this is just looking at that in a, in a chart or a pie chart format by grade.
Do we know why kindergarten and first grade is going down? Do we have that, why there's a slowdown?
I just think there's a smaller population of resident students for the most part at those grade levels. That's been a pretty consistent trend over the last three or four years as well. The interesting thing about our district, because of the mobility that takes place, we tend to get growth at different grade levels, different years, to often compensate for that, you know, with about 25% mobility. For most districts, kindergarten is in and kindergarten is out is, you know, the determinant there, but that doesn't necessarily play out here as much. But it's certainly something that we're keeping on. When the state used to do, population and birth rates were in that portion of time for five to 10 years where the state predicted that our birth rate would go down.
So where, where are they predicting we'd be?
They, we are.
Other questions? Thank you.
So as the board is aware, at the last board meeting, I brought before you for information purposes two different calendar options, something to talk about. And that was a school year calendar for 2020-21 that very closely mirrored this year's calendar, which included a week-long spring break in March. And then another calendar option which did not include a spring break in March, but instead an extended vacation time around the Easter holiday weekend. And was directed at that point to go ahead and survey our employees relative to their preferences between those two calendars. We got the results from those two surveys, it's a little bit wider spread than it was a couple years ago. When we surveyed a couple years ago, our employees were around 52% in favor of not having a week-long spring break and doing an extended Easter. And we had 52, 54% of the parents that felt that they wanted the spring break. So it was, it was a little bit stronger on the keep spring break when you brought all those people that chose to respond together. But the gap has widened amongst the staff. I think a lot of it does have to do with the school year being, ending later, with the calendar start date that was talked about before. And also, you know, the last couple years, we've had our share of snow or weather-related events as well. But as administration, I would recommend the board approve the option too, which would be for next year, to move away from having a spring break and having the extended Easter break, having a regularly scheduled end of the school year for May 28, which would be the first kind of long time that we have the chance of ending in May. We already know of snow events, and we will continue to look at this as we move forward year to year. I think one of the benefits of doing the Easter thing is that we tend, similar to winter break, to have a lot of students gone for a week or more during that time due to their family's choice to celebrate holidays and such. It does not negatively impact students that are doing the dual credit for the most part, although they may have courses that they need to attend to on the MCC campus during those days. But for the most part, it does not cause any difficulties there. There'll be some unique things with balancing quarters and or semesters. I think we got the semesters fairly well balanced out. The quarters really only apply to Miller where there's an annual exploratory course. So as is typically the case, they can make adjustments from what we've identified as the quarter end in terms of what makes the most sense for them. A lot of times those get adjusted anyway to the weather events, usually December through February.
Questions for Dr. Shuji?
I have a motion to accept option two as the calendar for the 2020, 2021 school year.
So.
Okay, now a second.
Heyman McGinnis, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same. The motion carries 5-0.
The next agenda item, I think, I've shared information over the past year about the Urban Education Network and others having talked about trying to figure out a way to provide greater equity as it relates to athletic classification. We haven't necessarily had a formal board presentation and such, but this again came to my attention this year as a result of attending a breakout session that Tommy Hart from the Des Moines Public Schools and Joel Pedersen from Cardinal of Eldon put on where they talked about the fact that 41 districts as of a couple of weeks ago had signed on to a resolution, which I'm putting before you today, to simply ask both the Iowa High School Athletic Association that represents boys athletics and the Iowa Girls Athletic Union to take into serious consideration factoring in weighting based on socioeconomic. The research has been pretty clear that money matters, both when it comes to educating children as well as matters in terms of their development for youth activities, basically because of their access or lack of to youth development prior to or in addition to what schools are able to offer. The most glaring inequities are demonstrated through a document that I've provided showing what has happened over the recent past with the Des Moines Public Schools in comparison to the suburban schools. And there's also some illustration of both the Quad Cities as well as the Sioux City Schools there. So in the, over the course of the last 10 years, when the Des Moines Public Schools have competed in football with the surrounding suburban schools, the overall record is 0-92. Marshall Towns wouldn't be quite that dire, but it's closer to that than being balanced, obviously. The average score during that same time period has been 51 to 10 suburbians over the metro schools. In the Quad Cities, where West, North, and Central are three Davenport high schools, same scenario kind of plays out with the suburban schools of Bednorf, Pleasant Valley, and Davenport Assumption, which is a parochial school similar to Dowling, but much smaller in size. I think they buy enrollment for a 3A district. The record there is 1 in 64 with their metro schools competing against their suburban schools, and the average score of a football game is 42 to 9. Then in Sioux City, it's very similar with a 3, or 2 in 34 record, and an average score of 47 to 10. So what this is asking for is for our state, respective state associations, similar to other states across the country, taking a serious consideration to providing a weighting factor relative to schools' free and reduced lunch percentage. So there'd be a different weighting if you have higher than 50% free and reduced lunch versus lower. And as a result of that, it will change how districts are classified for state competition purposes. So the simplest way to illustrate what could happen as a result of that, school districts with similar high percentages of free and reduced lunch may have a lower state classification. So instead of playing in the largest school class, they might be in the next largest school class or even a smaller class. Most likely, it would be a 3A versus 4A type of arrangement. And, and I truly believe that this needs to be looked at for all the major, what's considered the major sports, the basketball for boys and girls, baseball, probably track and field in addition to just football, but football is the most tightly with that season having ended and the data being readily available there. So this would simply make us the 42nd or so district to say, this is worth taking a serious look at, to provide greater equity and more competitive competition across the state. And hopefully would also encourage higher degrees of participation in a variety of sports with, with student athletes being, and coaches being in a more competitive situation.
Questions for Dr. Shute?
Is the level of student participation correlated with poverty level of the school?
Yeah, I think the research would show that participation has gone down significantly in the high poverty schools from what it had been as the poverty rate increases, and they're seeing that nationally as well in most of the sports.
That actually is consistent with my experience because I brought this up to parents who are trying to keep children in school because if they are involved in extracurricular activities. And parents who are living on the edge are afraid to have their children participate because if their children get hurt, either they have no health insurance, and if they have to pay medical bills, they lose their house, or they have a job that would not allow them to take off work to take their child to the doctor, and so there would be less participation.
Yeah, we're fortunate to be in a community that tries to do its best to help support financially families that wish for their kids to be in activities that can't afford it. Sometimes it's through the organizations themselves sponsoring the youth activities. Sometimes it's through like the Marsh Town Youth Foundation. But the other issue is transportation, and many of our kids are not in a position two or three times a week to be transported back and forth to practice by a parent or responsible adult, or the parents do not feel comfortable having their kids walk in an extended, you know, distance because of safety and that sort of thing, which is totally understandable. So even if the finances are assisted, there's other issues that sometimes come into play, especially with the youth levels and the younger kids. And then the same issues are at the high school level as well because many students still rely on our transportation, our public transportation, or friends to get them to and from school, and or parents if they're able, and then don't have ease of access, and or many of them choose and need to work as well at high school.
Other questions for Dr. Shute? I have a motion to approve the school classification equity resolution as presented.
So moved.
Faltis Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, the same. The motion carries 5-0.
The next three agenda items are all in relation to the refinancing of sales tax revenue bonds that the board has previously approved. If you recall at the last meeting, the board approved the option, option A from JP Morgan, which resulted in net savings to the district of about $267,000 over the remaining life of those bonds. So the first resolution is approving, these are all legal paperwork resolutions. The first one is appointing the paying agent, bond registrar, and transfer agent, approving the same, and authorizing the execution of the same.
Questions for Paulette? I have a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved.
McGinnis Faltis, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Opposed, the same. The motion carries 5-0.
The next item is approval of the tax exemption certificate for said refinancing.
I have a motion to approve the tax exemption certificate.
So moved.
Second.
Heyman Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries 5-0.
And the final resolution is authorizing the terms of issuance and providing for and securing the payment of school infrastructure, sales services, and use tax revenue refunding bonds that will be referred to as Series 2019.
Questions? I have a motion to approve the resolution.
So moved. Second.
Faltis McGinnis, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries 5-0. Oh my gosh, we're finally there. They've been sitting and waiting so long. In the back, are you awake back there?
Yes, ma'am.
Are you ready for us?
We are.
Finally. You chose to come to the longest meeting this board has had in months.
A lot of good news.
There was some good news, thank you. I'm going to have my partner, Mr. Mattson pass our packets to you. I'm grateful to have my good friend Holly, Janelle Freeman from Jester Insurance here with me tonight as well. I would start off with both a congratulations and a thank you as a citizen of Marshall Town. That is great news on the penalties of the IRS, and I hope I get to read front page news in some local and regional publications that give us the good press. So thank you, thank you very much. And Aaron, I'm not going to fight with you on major sports, but you missed one.
Yeah, soccer could be part of that. Right now, I mean, a lot of the focus has been on football, but yeah, it's applicable to, for sure, all major sports.
That's, that's just my, my points.
Some wrestlers would probably argue for that.
They might, they might, they might argue as well. Thank you for entertaining us tonight. We've had the chance to spend a couple of meetings with the finance committee. I'm not going to spend a ton of time going through the detail of the actual coverages in the quote. EMC Insurance has what I feel to be the broadest form of coverage across our industry and tremendous ability in working the school programs. You've got a three-decade background with EMC, and you know how coverages have responded with them. You blanket all of your coverages. That includes ancillary coverages like my accordance of law, and include that in the overall 170 million dollar limit. And EMC does a good job, in my opinion, of dummy proving the policy for people like me, so that the school has the applicable coverages they need at, at a time of loss. I'd rather speak more towards EMC's loss control. I would, I would enjoy the privilege sometime of taking any of you down to Des Moines and visiting the EMC Des Moines branch and their loss control facilities, absolutely state of the art. I've gotten the chance to appreciate the services through ensuring Marshall County through the tornado, where EMC immediately brought in a drone to assess damage. We are somewhere in the neighborhood of a $30 million claim. We did every imaginable form of coverage in that claim, and the form has responded tremendously well. We met with Paulette and the finance committee back two sessions ago, and we were unable to bring a firm number, and Paulette firmly sent us back to the drawing table to look at some other options. And we're excited to bring you a firm offer of that $777,000 number as a not-to-exceed number guaranteed in our numbers tonight. I'm going to have Janelle, if she would, speak a little bit towards specifically the workers' compensation and three tenants of that.
Sure. So the packets that you, excuse me? Hello? The packets that you have, there's a lot of information there. I would encourage you to go through it at your leisure. First section is coverage and premium. Second is the exposure basis that shows exactly what we use to rate. Third is a, a section about the safety group program with EMC and how it operates. And the fourth tab is on work comp. We are recommending that you go with Argent for workers' compensation coverage. I really think it's the best fit for the district at the current time. Argent is a division of West Bend that specializes in work comp. That's all they do. So their underwriters, their loss control representatives, and their claim reps are just solely used to doing work comp. We feel they can give you the support you need at the district level to really control your work comp costs, unless you're going to have a direct result, I'm sorry, a direct impact on your premium that you pay in the years to come. I really feel Argent can provide that hands-on support that district can use. There's a page here that talks about Argent, some of their background. There's also a page that looks like this that kind of talks about market share. Argent is the fifth largest rider of work comp in the state of Iowa. And as this exhibit shows, they consistently, year after year, perform better than other work comp carriers in terms of claims relative to premium. So that's a good indication that their loss control and their claims management are successful in reducing the clients' costs. The proposal from Argent is contingent on the district continuing to cooperate with loss control rep. The loss control rep came out and met with Paulette and a couple of other people from the business office, your facilities guy, and went through a lot of things. They had three recommendations to start off with. All are basic best practices that any work comp carrier would like to see the district do, and they're designed, again, to keep your costs down and our ultimate premium down. Argent's also offered to provide free loss control services between now and the time the policy would actually end, so, July 1st.
And the last tab deals specifically with contractual requirements that you have if you do choose to remove yourself from, from the IPSIP program. We strongly encourage you to have your school attorney take a look at that process, and we would also encourage you that maybe more than one touch point is actually pulling out of that, out of that pool. We could go into greater detail. I know we want to keep it, keep it short tonight. We do want you to know we're available for questions and answers tonight, two weeks from tonight, anytime in between the two weeks. We'd be very happy to talk to you about the tenants and the benefits of this proposal.
Board members have the proposal in front of them. We will not vote to accept the proposal or reject it until the next meeting. The figures to keep in mind are the 777. That's it, not going to go any higher. While you're looking at IPSIP and their requests for premium payment during this next year, if you have any questions as you're looking through the proposal, please email or call Paulette to get answers to those so that we can make a decision at our next board meeting. You've got the next two weeks to look at the pieces.
And I would just say, Bea, Sean, and I had the opportunity to sit down with Stephen Lobby last week since I was unable to attend the finance committee meeting that had been scheduled. And one of the things that I was most interested in was the recommendations for, I guess, let's say, more proactive and or stronger oversight and support relative to work comp claims and the accident reports and such. And I think what has been recommended or proposed as part of the contract, a lot of which would take place, you know, in January through June, I'm fairly comfortable with, and, and I think they're good positive steps considering the history that we've had in the arena. We've had even, we've had conversations before about what can we do differently to help. One of the things that I really appreciate had over the years with EMC has been their education resources, whether it's people on site or whether it's just materials that can be used internally. I think there's a lot that we can continue to do that we did before with EMC as well as further things that we can do to hopefully make a positive difference in that regard. But certainly, certainly want you to understand that the loss control services, they're unlimited, and Certainly, certainly want you to understand that the loss control services, they're unlimited and they're all included in the cost of the policy. No additional fees. It's just a value added give back to the policy.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
You have not watched media, you can stay. You're welcome.
As the birthday boy alluded to earlier in the meeting, we wanted to briefly review the process that we are going through right now. As part of it is new and part of it isn't. There are two completely separate legal processes that we have to comply with in regards to the tennis court complex project. One of those is due to the new state legislation. And that requires that anytime a district is wanting to use sales tax dollars, whether you're issuing debt or using cash on hand, you have to have a public hearing on that proposed project before you do that. So this is the new process and this is what we have already started. If you recall at the last board meeting, we set the resolution and the public hearing to be held on December 16th, 2019, which is our next meeting. And that notice will be published accordingly. Actually, I think it's in the paper today. So following that public hearing on December 16th, the board will be asked to consider a resolution supporting the proposed use of this revenue for an athletic facility project. There will be a certain, there's a 14 day waiting period following that public hearing in which a petition could be submitted to the district requiring that that question actually be placed on the ballot, which would be during an election in March then. The second part of the process is the construction project process. And this is not new. This is required for all public infrastructure improvement projects. So on December 16th, we will be recommending approval of a resolution to tentatively approve the plan specs, estimated total cost for this project. So that, and the direction for us to publish the posting of a hearing, another public hearing for the construction project and posting the notice seeking competitive bids for that project. We have certain publishing timelines that we have to meet legally for this process. So we are doing these things in a certain order so that we can meet these requirements for publishing these notices. Let's see, we anticipate receiving notification regarding a potential grant award from the Martha Ellen Ty Foundation by December 20th. And then a meeting will be held with FEH and administrators on January 6th to review final plan specs, et cetera, if that grant is awarded.
Yeah, so January is a month similar to July where we just have one regularly scheduled board meeting. And so that'll be a special meeting for the sole purpose of providing you more intimate details beyond the preliminary cost estimates and the preliminary designs that were shown earlier prior to going out for bidding. And so ultimately, you know, depending on what happens with our grant submission that we should hear from back by December 20th, could be a juncture as to determine whether we continue to move forward, perhaps put the brakes on things. And then again, on January 13th, board meeting where you would give approval to move forward with bidding out the project. And our end game goal was to be in a position to bid the project out in January and or February because that's the most opportune time to get the most competitive bids for a project that would either begin or take place during the summer.
Worst case scenario, you could be asking for bids before you actually approach approval.
Well, we don't need voter approval for using the saved dollars unless there's a petition that sign by enough people to bring it to a vote in March. And I think it's 900 and...
I have that number in here somewhere, I believe. It would require 914 signatures. The law requires 100 eligible electors or 30% of voters in the last preceding the election of school board members. And according to our assistant auditor, we had 3,047 voters. So 914 signatures would be required on the petition to require it to go to. It would take a pretty huge amount of time.
Yeah, and our hopes are, and I probably should clarify this earlier when Senator Representative were here, but our plan from the beginning was to use existing saved dollars that we have available to us annually in order not to have to borrow. And our best case scenario for that was a continuation of the prior arrangement that's existed for 45 years where the city and the school district do a cause share. City did not, the current city council did not feel like it was an opportune time to continue that partnership. A number of them said it's a worthwhile project, like all the things that came before them. But the timing wasn't right for it. That position will necessarily change in the immediate future, even though they've got some change within membership. But it's disappointing, to say the least, that a community use facility that had been partnered on for 45 years now may not continue to be a partnership. But we believe, meeting Director of Finance Newbold and I, that through some creative financing over the course of the next year, that we can still accommodate two-thirds of the cost for that through the existing save, not borrowing against future proceeds of save, if that needs to happen in order for the project to go forward. We've really been put at a disadvantage based on the fact that four of the courts, of the 12 total courts that are programmed to use with West End Courts went away. As I've said many times before, the community assisted, systemically gotten rid of community courts around the community to the point where really these are the primary courts other than one court that exists at Riverview Park that replaced French Park Courts many years ago, which is not useful, you know, for our purposes certainly, based on location and lack of quantity. So we're hopeful that one of the successful grant applications so that the board can take a serious consideration of moving forward. Our facility is to a point of deemed not appropriate to throw large dollars at in order to repair any longer. We've got 45 years, but usually it's a 30-year lifespan of the existing courts. And they're in a condition where we're not even considered any longer to host district and or substate, which is embarrassing actually. So hopefully we can figure out a way to move forward with this project. There's no question that we have bigger projects that need to be addressed over time. And the board will have to, Board Facilities Committee, Finance Committee will have to take a look at the cost related to those because it will likely bond our new access to saved dollars for a considerable period of time or in some cases may result in a decision to take something to the community as a bond referendum. Probably the most notable thing out there is the air conditioning of the high school, which we also have a second floor Miller that's not air conditioned.
At least one elementary is not air conditioned.
All of our elementaries are air conditioned currently. But there may be improvements that need to be made in those elementaries. For example, we kind of mandated to a certain extent air conditioning at Anson as we were deferring, doing more significant work until a determination was made on. Should we put millions of dollars into refurbishing Anson's school overall, including their air system? The high school has needs beyond air conditioning, which air conditioning and fire sprinkling today is about a $14 million proposition. But we have science labs that need to be upgraded. There's been desires for improved fine arts practice spaces. Possibly a need to relocate the main office and better connection with where the student entrance and exit for most students are. There's labs, spaces like family, there's a lot of things out there. Miller building, original structure is 1925. We are dealing with significant issues annually regarding tunnels and the infrastructure that's within those tunnels for sewer, for water and other things. And so, I mean, there's a lot of big, big decisions that makes this project pale in comparison in terms of the cost and complexity of this.
Thank you. Moving on to board policies. We have three policies that were presented at the last meeting. There have been no changes in those three policies. I, unless you have questions at this time, I would like a motion to amend 402.6R and 903.3 and waive the second reading.
So.
Second.
Heitman Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Policy 508.2 is a new policy. There have been no changes in that one either since our last meeting. I would accept a motion to adopt 508.2 and waive the second reading.
Can I ask a question about this one?
Yep.
This only applies to school activities.
Correct.
So it wouldn't have any application to a community group using a school facility on a Wednesday evening?
I think our practice has been not to allow that during that timeframe in the recent past, but we could revisit that. I mean, our...
In the past, past, that hasn't been the case. Yeah, past, past, doctors, past the work group.
Yeah, and my knowledge is somewhat limited on that although I...
The only issue was custodial services. And the group would need to pay for the custodial services.
Right, I don't have any problem with this as it's written. Because I think as it's written, it doesn't apply to non-school groups.
Right.
Correct.
I do, I do think we've been denying some of those requests though, but we may need to revisit that. I mean, I think the whole idea is to try to protect that time for families and especially with obligations that are church related and otherwise.
Well, assuming it would be a scout group or...
Now what's happening, you know, AU or club, youth activities or renting during those same times that we're trying to not schedule school related activities. At the end of the day, it comes down to parent choice, you know, what they want to do.
So now I need a motion to adopt and waive the second reading.
So.
Second.
Heitman Hernandez, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. Motion carries five zero. In looking at the 903, 4 and 5, my recommendation would be to mark 903.4, public conduct on school premises as reviewed. If there are no questions, we'll move ahead with that. Looking at 903.4, public conduct on school premises, there has been a line added. So it will need to come back at our next meeting or first reading. In 903.5, distribution of materials, there's been a change in that policy as well. So that too will need to come back at our next meeting. Questions on any of those policies? Any items of note, Mr. Sotters?
Well, we had a lot of good news coming out of the district over the last, oh, I can't remember what period it was. It was the latter half of November. We had, my favorite one, or well, I shouldn't say my favorite, one of my favorites was a group of Miller students have found really cool ways to enhance the food pantry at that school. In fact, I think they did a survey and found that the vast majority of their classmates did not even know that Miller has a food pantry. And just based on things like our free and reduced lunch numbers, district wide and at Miller, I know that a lot of our families probably could do with help when it comes to bringing home food. And they have gone and taken an extra step, not only identifying the food pantry, but also creating signage. I don't know if they put that up yet, but they were going to create some signage and put it in highly conspicuous places so that families know, hey, this is where it is. If you just walked into that secondary entrance at Miller, you probably wouldn't guess where it is unless it's open. So that will help. And then I think that one of the biggest aspects of the project was to take unused food products from the cafeteria when students were done with lunch and things like that and repurpose that or purpose it for the food pantry. That increases the total amount of food available for folks. So I was very, I could just maybe proud of being a part of the school district, knowing that that was going on. But we, we had holiday stroll, we had, let's see, can you... Thank you, sir. Yes, so there was steam night at Hoodland. Alexa Hothop at the Marshalltown High School was, her class was spotlighted there. So yes, just lots and lots of good stuff going on. I think I was busy almost every day leading up to the, to the holiday break we just had with stories coming out of our various buildings.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Looking at reminders, we have an equity meeting coming up on the 12th. Is that correct? And if you scroll down to look at the committees, Sean has a board committee. And Sean has two policies at this meeting. Woodbury Elementary is up for the showcase. Looking at committee reports, and Dr. Shu is handing out a list of board committees. You should see that you received, hopefully, a number of the committees that you requested. I did not receive requests from two board members, so we got what was left. We had an equity committee meeting on the 19th. Karina, did you say you were going to that one?
Yes, I did.
And would you like to report?
Yeah.
Using the microphone.
Using the microphone, sorry. We kind of went over the...
We kind of went over the purpose of what the equity meeting was. I think it was pretty well attended. We went over a little bit of what has been done in the past as far as presenter that we had. Can you remind me what his name is?
Isaiah Miggum.
Isaiah Miggum.
Yep. So we talked a little bit about that, and then other committee members talked about further than that, what had been done in the committee. So moving forward, I think we're just going to be focusing on our purpose and meeting more often than it has before.
Good. It didn't meet much last year, did it?
No.
That would be a reason to meet more.
Oh, yeah.
Internal communications, Mr. Kreissinger?
Do you want me to go up there or just?
Yes, please. You have a choice of microphones.
Great. So looking at our agenda from our most recent internal meeting, we spent some time discussing the employee handbook and the schedule to have that reviewed and out. We spent some time discussing how many new subs were hired since the last time we had the conversation, so about last month. There was discussion around how teachers and staff will be updated about the revision in 402.6R.
Technology policies.
Thank you. We also talked about the acceptable usage policies. It's a one-time sign-off about the use of technology as well. We had a long conversation related to what we, I presented on earlier today, where what are we doing for that handful of students that are really disruptive in the school? And spend quite a bit of time talking through what the federal law is, the state law, the AA procedures, and all the things that have to be done as we work through addressing their needs while still staying in compliance with federal regulations. And then the last thing we talked about was getting information out about flex spending, where Paulette in the business office said, please come visit whenever, and we'll be happy to talk with you about whatever your questions are.
Thank you. MDEA.
Yeah, the most recent MDEA meeting, which we leave us in early November, we had Kathy Leggett from Future Ready Iowa come and give a shortened but similar presentation as what she's been giving around the state at regional meetings. And it talked most specifically about work-based learning and apprenticeships that are growing across the state. We're the most recent announced registered apprenticeship with the work that Dvert has been doing and partnering with the Iowa Veterans Home on a CNA program, which will likely lead into another program for LPN. And our hopes are that it will culminate with full-fledged nursing certification as well. We also talked about subcommittee potentially down the road to look at some different areas, one being work-based learning experiences out in the community, another being looking and recalibrating or looking at what are the needs of business and industry as it relates to students that are coming out of the Marshawn Schools. And I'm trying to think what that third area was. I'm at a loss right now in terms of the third area. Yeah, can't remember what the third area was. But we're really excited because in January, I think it's January 28th, we're going to have the new executive director of the Iowa Business Council come speak also about registered apprenticeships and their desire to have more of those, or pre-apprenticeships, or any type of formal work-based learning for high school students. And then we also have some people coming from John Deere and the Quad Cities are going to talk about some of the work that they're doing to develop high school registered apprenticeships in the Quad Cities as well through John Deere.
We had a number of people attend IASB. Would you like to start, Sean?
Sure.
So on Wednesday, was Wednesday the first day? I had the privilege of attending the delegate assembly. After hearing Bee talk about it for the last four years, I got to experience it myself. It's every bit as much of a treat as you said it was. I mean, and you saw earlier when we were talking to our legislators, you saw the IASB legislative priorities that we approved. So that was how I spent my morning. The afternoon on Wednesday, I went to the unleashing innovation talk, which was a really kind of fascinating discussion about, you know, changing classroom instruction and, you know, 21st century skills and all those sorts of things. Then on Thursday, I went to a board self-assessment discussion. And it was really interesting to hear that we're in the minority of districts that actually does a board self-assessment. There are a lot, a lot of districts that don't do one, which is interesting because I think you derive a lot of value from, from doing a self-assessment. So I'm glad that we do it, and it's refreshing to know that we're doing things above and beyond a lot of other places are doing. I then attended, actually it was pretty timely with what Paulette talked about with the sales tax and the athletic facilities improvements and the two separate timelines for those. So I went to a discussion about the new requirements for infrastructure projects under the SAVE extension. Talked about, you know, revenue purpose statements and bonding and those sorts of things. So that was really a timely conference or discussion. And then I finished the afternoon at the mental health closing keynote speaker, which was just a really powerful presentation about mental health in schools. That was my IASB reporting.
Thank you. Karina?
Hey, I also went both days. I didn't attend, he attended, I think so it's very interesting, but I did attend the first day, the unleashing innovations as well, which I thought it was very interesting, and I think everybody needs to watch the video he showed about future, the future of work, which kind of eliminates a lot of labor jobs, and I thought that was very interesting for me. As far as showing it to my kids, and I think any, any teenagers should be watching that as far as how they can decide what they want to be in the future. I was excited to hear that one of the four of the components was college and career readiness, which that's what we're doing here. So that was exciting to hear that that's part of the future of our students, and we're getting them ready now, which we started a while ago now. So that was nice. I had never attended the school finance one-on-one, so I did. The past two years have just been one minute. No, but with questions and stuff. But it was interesting to me, it just kind of puts the puzzles together of little questions that I had here and there. So I was able to attend with the new board members, so that was nice. And with Paulette on my side, and extra comments or definitions that she had for us, so that was good to have her there. And the next day, we were able to listen to keynote speakers, which I thought did a great job talking about mental health and just really putting it out there that it's there, it's live. And there's several schools, not just us, looking at it the same way, finding a solution and finding the why instead of the going right at the target of trying to fix it. So Sir Ken Robinson was one, and Hamish Brewer, so look them up, and they were selling books. I didn't get one, but definitely I've been looking them up, and they were very interesting to hear. And I think I got very pumped when I heard them, and one actually read us dance and sing, so that was exciting. The other two sessions that I attended, one was how can your board ensure all students are future-ready? That one was really interesting, too. And then a slippery slope of school board and social media, which was more or less like Q and A about one of the school boards from, it was in Des Moines, I'm going to say Clive, I'm not sure what school, but somebody talked about what they do for social media. And so, like I said, it was a lot of Q and A from just different school districts asking questions about what a board can or cannot do in social media, what can be shared. A lot of things that I learned from then. And then I was able to meet with, it was a side session that was called Latinx Network Session, which I was able to meet a lot of board members that are Latinos in Iowa, so there were six of them from Sioux City, Des Moines, and Ames, plus myself. We took a picture and got to just talk about our board and our districts, so that was nice, too, to have that conversation with them.
Thank you.
The pool was good, too.
I attended on the first day some finance sessions with our new board members in Karina, and in the afternoon with one of our administrators. And although I've sat through those sessions probably about 15 times, I always find them interesting, and I love to hear the, the questions that new board members have, and we had some great questions, so that was good. Second day, I thought the two general sessions were really good. I thought it was really interesting, the delivery styles between the two general session speakers, I thought were completely opposite. You know, the first guy was very quiet and timid and stood in one place, and the second speaker was all over the place and just exuded energy. But they both had great messages, just different delivery styles. I attended a session on teacher shortages, which was really interesting. I think the numbers, you know, that are coming out of the teacher prep programs are, are concerning, and it was just really interesting to listen to the DE and a really small school district talk about how they are starting to pay bonuses and signing bonuses and such, or giving teachers to their district.
Teachers have taken a hit over the last 10 years when there's been no increases at the state level. Education is a fun place to be, having to make ends meet that don't meet. Thank you.
My turn?
Your turn.
I can say that on a few. So Sir Ken Robinson, who was their big keynote, it was probably the third time that I've heard him speak over the last decade or so, and he really spent a lot of time talking about the need to move more towards personalized learning for students in order to meet their special and unique characteristics, their strengths, their passions, and that can be done in one size fits all way. A lot of his work as of late has been about building creativity back in, which has kind of been squelched through overtesting and standardized testing and the drive towards that. He said basically there are four main roles of education. One is economic, enable students to become economically responsible and independent. Another is cultural, enable students to understand and appreciate their own culture and to respect the diversity of others. One is social, enable young people to become active and compassionate citizens. And then on a personal level, enable young people to engage with the world around them and as well, or the world within them as well as the world around them. I, too, attended the innovation. Well, I first went to the board orientation with the new board members, and it was like drinking out of a fire hose, as it usually is, with the information that they provided over that 90 minutes or so. But, you know, there were a lot of good resources that were given to the people in attendance with the board governance handbook was given to them, and then also mention of a lot of the resources that IASB has on the website. Hopefully, we'll get you access to that soon and later. There's public consumption items, but then for board members, there's password-protected stuff for members, so. I, too, like Sean and Karina, went to the unleashing innovation by Scott McLeod. Scott used to be the dean of Digital Administration and Policy Studies at Iowa State University, and so I got to know him there. And I, his presentation was greatly revised from what I'd heard in the past, and I think it would be good for us to bring him in at some point for the whole staff to hear and for anyone in the audience that's parents as well as kids. And then the breakouts I went to, I went to, where is the complaints department, which I'd encourage the new board members to attend, just because that's probably one of the more challenging things, is how to navigate when people come off the street or friends or what have, but their concerns and how to properly process them. One of our attorney firms, Allers, he presented that. I went to Matt's presentation, which was outstanding. Went to another presentation on overcoming property-based student inequity, which is what the resolution was about today. And then also spent probably a session worth going quickly through the vendor area to touch base with people that we're either partnered with or might be looking and partnering with down the road. Thank you to Sarah for letting me know that you had listened to those Capital Chat podcasts, which are about 10 minutes in length and an easy way to kind of get up to speed with legislative advocacy. The third one just came out this past week. It's worth 15 better workmanship points if you do that, so let me know if you do take the time to listen to those. And then January 16th is the next workshop that IASB puts on the regional workshop, which will be hosted by the Ames Community School District. Generally, we have a good turnout of our board. It's really good for new board members particularly, but better board members to help kind of process the information that's shared, because beyond the legal, there's different ways that districts handle different things, processes and process procedures. And so hopefully, we'll get a good turnout for that. I also put in for us to host that hopefully next year. Usually, it comes our way every five years or so. But I, I really think the last two years have been as good of IASB conventions as I've attended in terms of high-quality presentation keynotes, as well as a wide variety of really good breakout sessions, too.
So is the Ames presentation put on by IASB?
Yeah, it'll be their regional workshop that-
So then they'll split up all the board members so that they're sitting at different tables?
Yeah, usually anyone from our district, though, kind of split apart so it doesn't look and feel like a regular board meeting, and you get a network with other board members from other districts as well. And we would post that as a, as a meeting anyway, just because we'll have, if we have a quorum or whatever.
At our next meeting, Sarah and Jan and Bob and Lisa will give us their input from IASB. Moving on, what have we done this time to make education and work better for our students?
So I didn't go to Matt's presentation at IASB, so I was glad that you gave us your presentation, or at least the Cliff Notes version of your presentation here tonight, because it is great to hear what's your, what's going on, what's, you know, what you guys are working on. So I was glad you were here to tell us about it.
That's one.
Approved next year's school calendar, so we'll be done with school before June?
Maybe. We got a chance to speak to our legislators, which I always think is very important.
Advocacy by a school board is extremely important, so, yes. Others? All righty. My quote this evening comes from Leo Scolia. Alrighty. My quote this evening comes from Leo Moskalia, one of my favorite authors. If you haven't read him, he writes all kinds of things, so feel free. He says, "Only the weak are cruel. Gentleness can only be expected from the strong." May I have a motion for here?
So?
Hytman McGinnis, all in favor, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Opposed, the same. The motion carries five zero. Happy birthday.